You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
So I'll call the May 19th, 2021 meeting to order. Just remind everybody that this is a remote meeting under the Governor's executive orders. Please announce your name when you want to speak or when speaking. If you would like to speak on a particular item, use the raise your hand function. If you're calling in, use the star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself. All right, with that, we'll get the meeting to order. I just let everyone know that a revised agenda did go out earlier. However, there was nothing added to the agenda or removed from the agenda. It was just a clarification with some of the wording and the language regarding a number of the contracts. Some of them might have been under one agenda item, but needed to be covered under two separate ones since there's actually two separate contracts. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. As always, all the information, the agenda and the backup information could be found in the Dropbox. Item one, can I get a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes from May 5th, 2021?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectman Dunbar. Any edits, corrections, discussion? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, passed unanimously. Item two, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from Alex Paluzzi, Director of Parks and Recreation, waive the bid for the purchase and installation of trees, bushes, plants, and other materials for the Foot Park Tennis Court Viewing Area renovation project and award the contract to Van Wildens Garden Center in the amount of $22,593. I do not see Mr. Paluzzi. All right, we're going to move on. You had item number three as well. I don't see. I'm on the phone. Let's move on to, oh, actually, I'm sorry, here he is.
I'm on, sorry.
All right, go ahead. Is item two, the waived bid for the Foot Park project?
Good evening, am I muted?
No.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I did send to each of the selectmen and talk to you about this request. I'm requesting a bid waiver for the Foot Park Tennis Courts Viewing Area. And this is actually, it's actually a two-part project in two different years. But since it was the same vendor, that's why I'm coming in front of the selectmen. I also wanted to know that I did, I did look at two other areas which were Planters Choice and also Pride's Corner Farms, one out of Lebanon, Connecticut. The other one out of Huntington, Connecticut, which when we were getting trees for, you know, trees for the town this year. So I kind of looked at them and I called both of those areas up. A lot of the trees that had already been out were not, were not really apples for apples, were not available. One of the biggest thing was that is really the delivery charge and storage. And with, and with the plan that was developed by us along with, I mentioned, I had the collaboration between the Foot Trust Park Tennis Courts and the Foot Park Trust Board along with the Board of Rec, Parks and Recreation, Engineering Department and Public Works. Gary Zelinski had a little bit of a vision of what this area kind of might have looked for me. Has been very successful around town in different areas. Kind of had a vision and design that brought this to fruition for his talents. And we kind of put it together, looking at trying to stay with our plan of, we have a rain garden down there. We also have trying to incorporate Butterfly Garden in one of the areas. And also a really nice viewing area in front of the tennis courts with a nice pathway that you have a copy there going through the project. So the dollars are out of the Foot Park Trust. I wrote a grant last year requesting that. I do every year, I have to write a grant. And we were able to grab $15,000 for that grant. And $15,000 from last year, which is in our grounds, aren't we? We kept it out. We had $30,000 for the project. Right now, the project is coming in at $22,593. But it is a kind of a two-part project of just, I wanted to get, to make sure that we can order the trees and plants now so that we could do it out of this here with the dollars. And then obviously the dollars for the Foot Trust is available July 1st. And move forward, I think it'll be great. A lot of the residents and users of Foot Park are very, very excited because if you remember, there was a lot of white pines that were taken away from there. A lot of, we had a couple of close calls down there with, at times. And kind of took, maybe there was some other, pines are really great, but they really break. I actually was picking up a whole bunch of them over the last, every time there's a windstorm, they just fall and break, but they're a nice coverage throughout the park. And we're not looking to take any more down unless they are diseased or they fall down. But we always wanted a viewing area in that area. And I think this is going to be really, I think it's really going to be a wow factor kind of if you want to take a look at what we have when you go down. A lot of different areas of town, whether it's Branford Hills area, Stony Creek Pine Orchard, or even recently just over at the Foot Riverside Park over on Pine Orchard and Old Pine Orchard Road. So what I did is basically, it's really, when you order trees and you go, you know, you go through the process, you find out too that one operation might have, they can't come with, they might have an inch and a half or two and a half inch and then three inches in stock. So I just was piggybacking off of the other prices that were out, the two other areas. And I thought that we could, you know, go this, go this way. And I thought it'd be very, I think it's a great project. And I, I'm excited to work with Van Wildens because I've never, to be honest, I've never worked with them on a project other than everything that they've volunteered. And I'm not giving them the project for that. This was through the Board of Recreation. You know, I went through them and told them what we're trying to do. But we said, we're going to have to look at the pricing and where we're at, so.
All right, so if I can just summarize, Alex, and you just correct me, from what I heard you say, that you, you had a plan that was developed, working with staff to create a plan to reestablish this area. You then secured pricing from a local contractor, Van Wildens, to supply and install the plants, trees. You then, you then compared those, a number of the species to previously solicited pricing with other nurseries and found that the pricing was competitive. And you're making a recommend, or a request to waive the formal bidding process and award it because from what you've stated to us, that you feel that there's a fair price as well as the other benefits in terms of delivery and storage and watering of these trees. Because as you're doing this kind of at the end of the planting season and having those at a nursery being cared for and prior to being put into the ground, there's a benefit. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, 100%. No doubt about that. That was the biggest thing, delivery and the.
Yep. And the other thing I heard is that this was all funded through the Foot Trust grant.
Correct.
That what you stated? Okay, I just want a clarification.
And I always say that a lot, as you should know me, or people know me, that I've said many times, I'm the one that's personally responsible for writing the grant. We were able to secure an extra $50,000 in two of the last two years, which is, we usually are allocated 20,000. Usually we're allocated dollars for, $125,000 for operations. A lot of the money's in grounds and also the other part is, $75,000 is usually for capital. I was able to, the other part of the capital this year was to replace some of the toddler swing areas down, the play areas down there. So that's, that's what it was. So we were very happy to get that and they gave us an extra $50,000 each year. So we're very happy with that.
Good job on the grant. Does anybody else have any questions?
He's already answered all the ones I asked him yesterday.
Can I get a motion?
Selectwoman Higgins, motion to approve.
Selectman Dunbar, second.
All right, it's been moved to second. Motion on the floor. Mr. Cook, you'd like to speak?
It's unmute, yes, unmute himself.
Yeah, I asked him.
And I, a couple of things. I happen to come across this item. And let me say a couple of things first. I mean, I go back 50 years with Alex. I think he does a terrific job with his staff down there. He doesn't agree with everything I do in town. I don't agree with everything he does. But I'm somewhat concerned about this one, and I'll tell you why. And it's not to single out Alex and his department because I see this come across this board a lot. If you're not going to respect the bid process, then why even have one? And I understand that there's mitigating circumstances that come into play. But in this case, I don't see the big hurry to put up trees in June. Quite frankly, I was always under the impression that trees are best planted in the fall. So right there, you should probably wait. And so what if people can't view them over the summer? I mean, it's worse things in the world than that. Secondly, you know, and again, not to pick on Alex, because I've seen other departments do the same thing. You know, to take a look around is not the same thing as to offer a formal bid process. You know, that's, that's not fair to the other people out there. And then thirdly, and I know he addressed this, you know, and I'm shooting straight here. He shoots straight with me about issues. You know, the last sentence concerns me that Van Wildens gave 100 trees. Like, so what? I mean, I don't even know what size trees they were. Were they like, you know, three-inch trees or whatever? And it gives the impression, and maybe this was just a slip, that, well, you know, he gave us this stuff, so maybe we should just waive his bid because of that. And I wonder quite frankly, and I'm being honest when I say this, you know, does that mean that if someone does a favor for the town that they get the bid waived? Is that the policy of this administration? Because I'll give you a bunch of trees. If you give us the zoning we want up at exit 56, I'll be happy to give you some trees. I would just like these concerns addressed because quite frankly, these are legitimate concerns. I mean, and again, it just singles back into one central question. If you're not going to respect the bid process, then why have one?
Okay, thank you for your comments. I would just want to state that, that sentence that you referenced has no bearing on my decision on how I'm going to vote for it. I agree, I think it's irrelevant for what's before us. And as I explained the last meeting, that this topic came up in terms of the bidding ordinance. Just remind everybody that this process, where we're coming before the board or our department has coming before the board for a public vote, is part of the bidding ordinance. So this is an acceptable process. All right, so we have a motion to approve and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. We're moving on to the next item. We've got a packed agenda. Item three, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from the fireworks committee to waive the bid for the 2021 fireworks display and award the contract to Zambelli Fireworks Manufacturing Company in the amount of $24,000. Alex Paluzzi, you going to present this?
Yeah, so I'm actually presenting it and for Jeff Lett, who's chairman of the committee. He couldn't be there tonight. I did discuss it also with, in length with each of the selectmen. And Selectman Dunbar brought up to me today, which was a good point. And Selectman Dunbar, I did look at, I did look at that as you pointed out. And I, and what happened was if you go to the last page of the document that's there, I did talk to him, that was a typo from, when we had to do the 600, they required a 600-foot radius. And if you look at the last page, you'll see that it does say no rain date. But if you go back to, you'll see number one, it was written in by Zambelli of a postponement date. But then if you follow to page, I just, this is what I saw right too. I saw, if you go to the actual communication sheet from Zambelli, you will see that they do have the show date as June 26th and they also have the rain date on June 27th. So that was a good point that he made out there. But I, I had followed up since we talked about it this afternoon. And that was just a typo because they were on the last page, if you take a look at it, just on the radius. So that is confirmed that we do have that date. Just to bring this back also, back a couple of years ago, we have $24,000 that we allocate for the fireworks, which has been really consistent over the last few years. Last year, we weren't able to hold the fireworks committee, so we didn't come forward. We had four different organizations that wanted to bid on it. One was Bay Fireworks that unfortunately, they are under a different ownership at this point. So they did not put one in. And we also had another one that we've had many years ago that were here that did not put in another formal bid, so quote. And we had two. So the committee, one was from Atlas Fireworks because they had, they had solicited to us and said, can they, you know, can we put in a bid or a quote for, for that? So then 2019, we did do that. And our, we looked over all the contracts at that time. We had had them that previous year when they just, you know, the shell count was just a lot more, a lot more value. This, that, two years ago, we were getting about 1,719 shells from Atlas. And if you remember the show from a couple of years, it was fabulous down at the dock. And we got over 2,200 shells. So we were going forward with that. But again, we had to, we didn't realize we were going to have the fireworks this year to just recently. So we're just trying to honor the, the committee unanimously to go with Zambelli because we were getting more bang for our buck, more shells than we were getting from the other vendor. So I'm asking to, again, to move forward with the fireworks and grant it to Zambelli Fireworks, our committee is.
Okay, thanks, Alex.
Selectwoman Higgins, motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, I'll second it, but I have a, I have a comment.
Okay, move by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectman Dunbar. Go ahead, Selectman Dunbar.
I appreciate all the work that the fire committee puts in. And I understand that we're just coming up with, you know, maybe, maybe what we're considering last minute, that we're going to be able to hold it this year, where I think there was time. My only concern is, is that at some point in time, I think all boards, commissions and committees maybe need to have, have a little more input from the finance department. As much as I appreciate, you know, they, they went to bid in 2019, this is 2021. And we don't know what the bang for the buck would be this, this year because we didn't solicit from anyone. If there's only a few vendors, certainly, certainly we can start doing that. You know, my options are to vote for it or not vote for it. And obviously, I'm not going to vote against it and not have fireworks in town. But I would like to see the procedure go a little bit better in the future. And that's, that's not, it's not a real criticism. I think a lot of times, a lot of boards and commissions don't really know, you know, what some of the guidelines are. We, we try to tell them from time to time. And the only reason I have that concern is because I did get a phone call last night from one of the committee members, and I'm not going to say who. But, but their knowledge of what should be happening was, well, we got $24,000 and we're only spending $24,000. So I don't know why we have to get a bid waiver. So that's, that's the only concern on that, that maybe they just don't know. And again, not criticizing what they do, they do a fabulous job they have for years. I know I worked them. But in the future, to keep it, what I always like to say is a little cleaner. Maybe we can just try to put it out, there's not that many vendors, like Alex said. Just, just put it out to bid. If, if someone's going to give us a lot of shells for the money, they're going to give us a lot of shells for the money and the other people aren't. I think we just keep the accounting part of it cleaner. But that being said, I plan on voting for it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Cook.
Couple of things. First of all, I was not done speaking to that tree issue. And I like to ask the first selectman in front of the entire community, what are you going to do when you don't have that mute button anymore? When we have live meetings? Because I'm going to say something, I'm going to say it in front of everybody. You know, you know, I had a major problem with the former first selectman, Al Dross. I thought he was dishonest, I thought he was corrupt, I thought he was vindictive. But unlike you, at least he let people speak. His people tried to shut us down, but at least he let people speak. At least he wasn't a coward. And I'm calling you out on that one, first selectman. You are a coward when it comes to taking on public comments. You're sitting there with that mute button, you think you're, I don't know what you think you are.
Okay, do you have a comment?
I do have a comment, and I'm making it.
Comment, we're going to have a productive meeting, maybe that's.
We're going to have a productive meeting because you shut people down. It's your productive meeting.
Go ahead.
I'm telling this community, I'm telling this community, not only are you dishonest and not only are you corrupt, but you are a coward. You do not let people speak. You should be ashamed of yourself. Why don't you let people speak to their concerns? And I want, I want people to watch the rest of this meeting and see how open you are to people's concerns and citizens' concerns. You say, oh, we're doing the work.
Are you going to speak to the customer?
The work of the board of selectmen is to listen to the people and to, and to address their grievance.
One last time, Mr. Cook, are you going to speak to the issue?
I'm not going to speak, I'm going to speak to the issue because again, another bid waiver, another bid waiver, you know, just completely indicative of this administration. But what I'm mostly concerned about is the way you shut me down on that last issue. Because you didn't want to hear what I had to say. And you're dishonest. And not only that, but you're cowardly. And I'm telling the whole town, you're cowardly. Be ashamed of yourself.
Thank you. Moving on. We had a motion, a move, the second, any other comments? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, passed unanimously. Moving on.
Alex, thank you for that information, I appreciate it.
Item four, to hear a report from Brian Devlin, Superintendent Waste Water Treatment Facility concerning emergency work that was necessary to repair and replace a section of horse mane located on Maple Street. Go ahead, Brian. You're unmuted, Brian, but we can't, no, don't. Brian, check your microphone, make sure it's on. Give me a wave when you're ready, we'll move on, okay? Item five, to consider and if appropriate, approve a recommendation from the Solid Waste Management Commission to exercise the town's option to extend curbside collection contracts for additional one year at a previously bid price. With this, we have Sustainability and Compliance Manager, Diana McCarthy-Berkery. Diana?
Good evening, first selectmen and Board of Selectmen, thank you for having us today. The Solid Waste Management Commission voted at its past two meetings to make the recommendation to extend, excuse me, exercise the first-year extension. And in some cases, a second-year extension on some of the waste and recycling contracts. The first one that we're discussing right now is for the curbside collection contract. And I'm happy to answer any of your questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, so essentially, items five through 10 are all previously bid and where these are exercising extensions on those current contracts. Just so the public is aware, the Solid Waste Commission will issue a number of bids on various aspects of managing our waste and recycling. They'll make a recommendation to the board, the board accepts it. They often carry two one-year extensions. And if the town decides to exercise that extension, it comes before us. Any questions for Diana regarding this issue?
The only thing I have, Diana, and I actually spoke to Trista earlier today. I wasn't able to get in touch with you. My fault, not yours. Prior to voting on this tonight, I just wanted to reach out to the grievance process for some of the residents, you know, the complaints as far as, you know, garbage cans being thrown, the noise and so forth. I myself didn't realize that the process really goes through Public Works. And I wanted the people to know that we don't just approve these contracts, that we actually do look into, you know, the workmanship of the people. So could you just quickly explain the process to the public as to what they do when they have a complaint? So it follows the proper chain?
Absolutely. So all of the contracts are overseen by the Solid Waste Management Commission. And if anybody has a complaint about loud noise or miss of collection or skipped collection, damage to property, damage to their recycling bins, their trash bins, you know, anything else like that, issues with the collection team, they should immediately, not wait, they should call either Sharon or myself in the Solid Waste and Recycling Department to voice their complaint. We'll ask for very specific information like, you know, their location, the date it happened, the time approximately, if they can describe, you know, the vehicle or the situation for us. We record all of that information. We have a tracking sheet that we record. And then we file each individual complaint back to the collection company. And they have 24 hours to respond. And I don't mean, you know, just give us an answer, but 24 hours to, to right the wrong if it, in the case of a skip or a missed collection. If it's damaged to property, they have, you know, they have to either replace the property, the receptacle, or they go, you know, back out to, to correct the damage, to repair any of the damage that they've done. And we track that. And for repeat offenses, we will take deductions off of their invoices. And, you know, we, we take it on a case-by-case basis. You know, there have been, you know, several repeat issues that have led to, you know, enforcement of, compliance of their contract. So my recommendation for anybody, if they have questions or concerned about anything that has to do with waste or recycling, to not wait, to let us know right away so that we can handle, handle those issues for them.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Unfortunately, I think that some people think that we're following social media all the time. So when they post it, it's not making its way to us and we can't correct things that way. So that's why I wanted you to explain that. You by telling the process, maybe that'll help us in the future. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, call or email or, you know, pop over in the office and say hello.
Thank you.
Contact information is on the town website or the department.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Higgins.
Can you tell me that this extension will be at the same price that we have now with this company?
No, specifically for the curbside collection company. It is escalated a little bit from the previous. little bit from the previous year, but these are prices that they provided to us during the RFP process. So this, this first year and then the next year extension prices were all part of their bid package in, I think it was 2018.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Nichols.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'm just wondering just what those dollar amount increases are. That's all. Thank you.
Um, I, you're talking specifically to the curbside collection contract. Um, I believe the contracts are all listed on the, um, the Dropbox, but I'll do it off of memory. Um, I believe the, the current year that we're in was about 1.0, uh, 1.06 million, thereabouts. Uh, and it will be increasing to, uh, 1.08 million. This is for curbside collection of, uh, waste and recycling and leaves.
So it's approximately a $20,000 increase. Mr. Cook. Oh, you muted yourself there. Go ahead.
My question is, it seems to me that these are in essence either, uh, well, the five that you mentioned are, uh, one-year contracts with the option to extend either one or two years. Is that a general, uh, accuracy in stating that? And then I think my question becomes then, for what reason would you not extend the contract? In other words, why don't you just give them a, a two or three-year contract and then put the process out to bid again?
Sure.
Why would you make it one year and then with the option of, you know, adding another for two years? I don't see why it works like that.
Sure. It's actually, the contracts are bid for three-year contracts and then they have an additional two one-year extensions if the town decides.
So it's a three-year, it's a three-year contract?
Yes.
And then you can extend it one year twice if you want to?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, I forget. This was moved and seconded, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. All in favor said, no, it wasn't?
Wasn't?
Okay.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve?
Selectwoman Higgins, uh, motion to approve.
Selectwoman Dunbar second.
All right. Move the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, extensions passed unanimously. Um, item four, oh, I'm sorry. Item six, to consider and if appropriate, approve a recommendation from the solid waste management commission to exercise the town's option to extend the disposal of newspaper, cardboard, office paper contract for an additional one year at the previously bid prices. Same explanation. Um, I don't know if anybody has, uh, want to make a motion or if there's any further discussion?
Selectwoman Higgins, motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectwoman Dunbar. Mr. Nichols, you can unmute yourself. This is a new comment. I don't.
Uh, no, I, I was remuted. I wasn't able to finish what I was asking. You said it was, you said it was 20,000, but I believe she said it was 200,000. I could be wrong.
No.
I just need clarification.
I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Diana, I believe the current contract is approximately 1.0600, uh, 60,000. And the new one is going to be 1.087.
That's correct.
So it wasn't 1.6 and 1.8. It's a difference of about 20,000.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem. Okay. Um, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, uh, item seven, to consider and if appropriate, approve a recommendation from the solid waste management commission to exercise the town's option to extend the disposal of commingled containers contract for an additional one year at the previously bid, uh, prices.
Selectwoman Higgins, motion to approve.
Selectwoman Dunbar second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectwoman Dunbar. Discussion, hearing not all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, substantial passing answer. Item eight, to consider and if appropriate, approve a recommendation from the solid waste management commission to exercise the town's option to extend the hauling of newspaper, bottles and cans and cardboard contract for an additional one year at the previously bid price.
Selectwoman Higgins, motion to approve.
Selectwoman Dunbar second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectwoman Dunbar. Discussion, hearing not all in favor, say aye.
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 Extension, uh, opposed, extensions, passing answer. Item nine, to consider and if appropriate, approve a recommendation from the solid waste management commission to exercise the town's option to extend recycling of scrap metal contract for additional one year at the previously bid price.
Selectwoman Higgins, motion to approve.
Selectwoman Dunbar second.
Then moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectwoman Dunbar. Discussion, hearing not all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, extensions, passing answer. Item 10, to consider and if appropriate, approve a recommendation from the solid waste management commission to exercise the town's option to extend the management of bulky waste contract for an additional one year at the previously bid price.
Selectwoman Higgins, motion to approve.
Selectwoman Dunbar second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectwoman Dunbar. Discussion, hearing not all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, extensions, passing answer. Thank you, Diana. We'll jump back, see if, uh, Brian Devlin is able to, uh, have sound.
Can you hear me, Jamie?
We hear you now. So this is item four, to hear a report from Brian Devlin, superintendent wastewater treatment facility concerning emergency work that was necessary to repair or replace the section of force main located on Maple Street. Brian, go ahead.
Yes, Brian Devlin, superintendent, water pollution control, uh, April, uh, 27th on Maple Street, a section. I lost a section of force main. It had to be repaired. I had a quality, it was emergency work, quality, uh, so sids came out. They had to dig a trench 11 feet deep, replace the section of cement line pipe, uh, backfill it, refill it and repave the area. I took the section out. I, I have an engineer work with me. What cost of working on that now? But the total cost for the installation and, uh, excavation work for the repair, uh, we tested the pipe out. Everything's working, uh, the lines back online. Um, the cost was 30,000, 31,284 dollars and 55 cents for the repair. Uh, any questions?
Brian, do you anticipate, uh, is that older pipe on that road down there that we anticipate possibly more breakage?
You, you know, Ray, the line was put in about 13 years ago. So I, I got ahold of the engineer involved with the Maple Street pump station as, uh, that it goes from there. It's a 5,500 foot run. We cambered 60 feet. I brought the engineer in because the section of the pipe actually rotted from inside. So we're working on that. It's possible we might be sleeving the pipe in the future. So we don't have any more issues like this. So I'm working on that now, actually.
Right. Thanks, Brian.
You got it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Selectwoman Higgins, second.
Okay. It's moved by Selectwoman Dunbar, second by Selectwoman Higgins, a motion to accept the report. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, substantial passing answer. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Have a good night. Uh, item 11, green news, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from Matt for the use of the town green on Saturday, October 9th, 2021, from 7:30 AM to noon to hold the annual Walk Like Matt event.
Selectwoman Higgins, motion to approve.
Selectwoman Dunbar second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectwoman Dunbar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, passing answer. Reappointments, regional water authority representative policy board, Mario Roccozzi, term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Selectwoman Higgins, motion to approve.
Selectwoman Dunbar second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectwoman Dunbar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, passing answer. Item 13, appointments, conservation environmental commission, Heather Wells Sweeney, to fill a vacancy left by Michael McGinnis, term to expire July 31st, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectwoman Dunbar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, substantial, item carries. Item four, uh, 14, correspondence. Uh, Dear Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen was requested several months ago by the RTM to establish an ad hoc committee to study the $20 million, 77 acre Tabor property currently being given away without authorization by the first selectman. Today, your board has neither discussed this issue publicly or afforded the citizens an opportunity to speak to it and present vital visual material through the use of Zoom screen share. It is asked that the entire Board of Selectmen discuss this matter under correspondence at the next meeting and provide the citizens a fair and open opportunity, present clear evidence of wrongdoing and abuse by the, of power by the first selectman and his gifting of the Tabor property for his own political gain. Sincerely, Wayne Cook. I guess my comments to this correspondence, uh, issue, uh, then I'll ask if any other, uh, on the board would like to respond to it. I believe we did respond, uh, publicly to this request, although I believe the RTM sent this directly to the first selectman to establish the ad hoc committee. Uh, I had said, uh, I believe on more than one occasion publicly that I am not supportive of forming an ad hoc committee to create a master plan for the 77 acre Tabor property. I think it would be, uh, not only, uh, a waste of time and resources, uh, at this point, but I also think it could have a, an effect to go through a, a study or a plan that creates, um, a, a, uh, best use or the property at this time. That could be utilized, uh, for depending, have an open-ended study with, you know, with no regard, what will come out and what the ramifications will come out. I am not in favor of that. I have stated that. I said, if a future administration wants to have a feasibility study, um, uh, on that property or a master plan, uh, certainly that's the right of a, a future administration. Uh, as I said, um, again, this has been answered. The property is not being given away. It's not being given away. This is all remains town property, uh, for even for the passive use that is being down there. It is, still remains town control. Other than the, uh, there is a lease agreement in place for the solar array, which went through, uh, several boards and commissions, uh, for to utilize that, uh, piece of property for the solar array, which the town wastewater pollution control in particular benefits, uh, from the, an energy being produced from that solar array. Uh, so that's my position. I hope I'm clear. Uh, I believe I was, has clearly stated the position, uh, in the past. Um, and I don't know if there's any other comments to be made by the board at this time.
The, um, I, I guess I have a couple of things. I, I think at some point in time, and it doesn't have to be on that subject, um, that, that the board needs to come up with how any citizen, and, and it has nothing to do with Mr. Cook, cause in all fairness, there's, there's other people that are even on here tonight that may want, do we have a plan or, or an understanding as to, um, how citizens would make a presentation to this board? Um, and I, and I say that Ogie, um, with input from both of you is because it, it seems to be it's hit or miss. Um, and, you know, we get, we get some subjects that, that come up, you know, maybe more than once. Um, but like I said last time, we don't have closure. I, is there a way that we can come up with an agreement, this board to, to, even if it's, you know, a one-shot deal, and I totally understand that and how we do it, timelines, whatever, but to come up for any citizen that has, say, a presentation, um, to make. And, and, and I'm sure there's a few that, that, you know, I might not necessarily like to hear. Um, but in all fairness, I, I guess that's why we got elected to do that. But, and I don't expect an answer right at this moment. Um, but, but I, I think there's something we need to do just to let the people know, yeah, good or bad, we're going to listen to you. Um, you know, make your case and, and then where it goes, it goes. Um, but I think sometimes, and maybe with the Zoom stuff, it got a little bit crazy. Um, you know, we're, we're not always, we don't always have that. The tolerances are lower and so forth. Um, so that being said, I, I hope that that's something we can do as a board and agree as a board to some, some standard to do it. And I guess the only other thing I have is, and I, and I should have asked this earlier and I apologize for not, but do we plan on going back to in-person meetings now? Um,
Yeah, um, I was going to bring that up at the end of the meeting, uh, Selectwoman Dunbar. I, I do, next month, if the board is comfortable, we'll go back to in-person, uh, now that, uh, the restrictions have been relaxed. Um, I will answer your, your question and, and certainly would welcome further discussion if you feel is necessary, um, in terms of your question of how a, a citizen can get an item on the agenda. Um, again, to be clear, I think I've stated many times, we're here, and I think we, from what I've heard from the other selectmen, we're here to do the work of the board of selectmen. If there's something that a selectman feels that is, uh, uh, i- i- is under the purview of this body, um, then, then we will put it on the agenda. I, I think I've stated many times, uh, i- if another selectman, yourself or, or Selectwoman Higgins had an item that they felt was relevant, once again, to the purview of this body, uh, and requested an item to be put on a, an agenda, um, I would respect that request and we can take it under consideration and, uh, before this board. However, you, you, you stated, uh, in this, in your comments about seeking closure on a number of issues. Um, I don't know if, if, you know, there's closure or so, I'm open to have, again, once again, if it is the purview, to have a discussion and consideration on topics. But the one thing I will not allow is to have chaos. It has to be done in a, in a way that an item is presented that is relevant, once again, to the board of selectmen here under, uh, and, and then the board can decide, uh, if action is necessary at that point.
Well, thanks. Cause basically you just answered my question. So that, that's what we can do. And the citizens know that that's, that's what we're going to do and we'll, we'll, we'll take that path. Um, so there is a path is, is what I wanted everyone to know. There's a path to, to doing it. Um, you know, so, you know, I, I, I'm gathering that as far as the, the requests, uh, well, I don't know. I don't know if he's made the request. I see his hand up. If, if Mr. Cook has a request or, or not. Um, but I, I, I guess, I guess part of my thing is, and, and not defending or, or going against anyone, it, it just seems like the same subject matter keeps coming up and coming up. And I'm just trying to think of a way that we can have, you know, a meeting, a hearing, uh, a, a, a display, a conversation somewhat. Let people have their, their shot at it and, and then we can move on from there. That, that's all I really mean. It's, it's no criticism to anything. It's just that there are a lot of subject matters we seem to go over and over and over. And I would like to have some way possibly so this board can do its job, you know, a mechanism in place to, to give someone their say and, and then move on. Um, and again, you know, you're the, you're the CEO, you, you have to, you know, you have to hear it a lot more than I do. So, but, but that's really all I was saying. It's, it's, it's not on any, you know, any particular subject matter. Um, but though some people that are on tonight obviously have some items they would like us to, to discuss. And, and, you know, that's why we're here, I guess. Um, so that, that would be my suggestion to find a way to do it.
Yeah. And I, I see Selectwoman Higgins, like, go ahead. Do you like to make a comment?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, we, we, you, we always are open to, uh, to listening to what the public might want to offer us. And you always have, besides, uh, if you attend the meeting or right now it happens to be Zoom, under other, you can always, as a citizen, bring up, uh, your concerns and we're here to help and listen to what's going on. However, I want to say very clearly that I think that this board, the three of us, have been very patient and listened for hours and hours to presentations. I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody of wrong, being wrong, other than we've listened, we've heard, maybe, maybe. Maybe, maybe what we, we took from it was not the answer someone wanted to hear, but we did, we did in fact, listen very clearly and openly, all three of us. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you. And again, just to follow up on your, uh, right, uh, Selectwoman Dunbar, um, if you feel, and again, as Selectwoman just, uh, pointed out, if a citizen wants to bring up something, they can either send us a letter, as we often receive, or can bring up an issue under other business, and we will hear what that is. And if the board feels that it i- is something that's under our purview, which warrants perhaps, uh, a further discussion or even a presentation, and if one of the selectmen on the board would like to present, uh, or request that, then I think those, um, uh, that would be accommodated. So again, I, I think that's the, that's a clear process. I think that's a fair process. Um, and it-
I think we're all in agreement. That's, that's a process, yeah.
Okay. Uh, all right. One other correspondence. Um, just want to remind you, we have a special COVID vaccine, vaccine evening clinic. This will be Tuesday, May 25th, uh, four, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the community house. It's on 46 Church Street. So once again, that is Tuesday, May 25th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. You can call the hotline, the COVID hotline, uh, 203-315-0685, or 203-315-0620 for more information. Um, and walk-ins are available, uh, at this clinic. Krista, just give me a nod. Walk-ins, but appointments are preferred. Uh, thank you. And I think you can go to the town's website and Facebook page and, and get some information to those contacts. Okay, item 15, other business, or any other business?
Mr. Cook's got his hand up.
I see, uh, go ahead, Mr. Cook. Go ahead, Mr. Cook.
All right, a couple of things. First of all, that was just a charade that we listened to. You have not listened to the items that even I personally want to bring forward. And to the third selectman's point, even if you listen to anything, you've never answered any questions. You haven't answered one question yet. This is an absolute, but you, I don't even know what kind of government we have. You know, we have a first selectman up there that says, well, if it's in our purview. What is not in the purview of the Board of Selectmen? If you have a citizen that comes to you with a concern, that is your purview. You don't sit there and just ignore the citizen and not allow them to speak. And I'm a little bit tired too, and I'm going to say this publicly, of the second selectman kind of tiptoeing around these issues. Oh, well, do we have a process where citizens can speak? Yeah, just say you want the citizen to speak. Just say you want them to screen share and put these, you know, items up in front of the public. That's all you got to do. What do you mean we have to have a process where citizens are allowed to speak? This is the most, you know, I can't even believe the kind of government we have in this town. I mean, this is like third world government. Cannot believe it, where you do not let the citizen speak. Now, I want to bring up a couple of issues. In addition to this entire lack of respect for a citizen's right to, to bring a grievance or a concern in front of the Board of Selectmen, because the RTM does the same thing. You guys like, you, you like play ping pong. Oh, it's not our purview, it's their purview. And you just keep bouncing the issues back and forth. And the truth of the matter is, first selectman, that you're giving that property away to your green cult friends because you want their vote in November. That's, that's all you're doing. And you're saying, well, it's still town property. Maybe it's town property, but you're making that property useless for any future, any future use. And for you to say that we don't have, we shouldn't have a master plan, we shouldn't have a ma-, well, what are you going to do? Let the 77, $20 million worth of property just sit there and let you give it away so that some future administration comes in and say, well, we can't do anything with it because Costco gave it all away for these other uses? That is so bad. That is such a pathetic excuse for not answering the question. Secondly, I'd like to make a presentation at some point, probably won't be tonight, but how this town can save millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars, and any aggravation you think occurs at these meetings by putting in an office for accountability and transparency. Because I'll tell you something right now, and it's a God's honest truth, this town government is not accountable and it's not transparent. And the only way you get around the issue, the only way you get away with it, Mr. Costco, is because you have a weak, you have a weak opposing party. That's clear. You have no investigative press. Nobody looks at what you're doing. The RTM is, is a joke. And that's how you get away with all this stuff. And that's what's going on here. But you were not accountable. You were not, you know, by any means transparent. And it goes through your whole administration. And I'll challenge you any day, you can bring any 10 people with you, any kind of formal debate you want, and I'll bring my posters and I'll show people what kind of government that you run. It's corrupt. It's absolutely corrupt. And you know, something else that came up too. You know that investigation for Costco that you supposedly, you had, you know, five years ago? Our attorneys can't even get it. Your attorney, the town attorney, won't even give it to them. Under subpoena, under subpoena. Why? Peace, maybe the thing doesn't exist, which we knew all along. And that's just one example, just one example of the countless, and there really are countless examples of your corrupt and dishonest government. And for the third selectman to sit there and say, oh, we listen to you, nonsense, Angie, absolute nonsense. You listen to nobody. All you listen to, third selectman, in all respect, and you know I like you as a person, the only person you listen to is the first selectman. You don't listen to citizens. And as far as the second selectman goes, quite honestly, I'm almost disgusted with him, to be really honest, and just put it out there publicly. Because he just sits there and says, is there something we can do? Yeah, the people put you there, Ray. The people put you there to listen to their concerns. Not the wonder to the corrupt first selectman, is there some process? Yeah, the process is just let the people speak. Just let the people speak. And you know, and one last thing, I'd like to see what you do at the next meeting when it's live. How are you going to mute us then? Because you know me, you know, I have no problem just continuing to speak as, 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 as long as I feel I have a right to speak.
Okay.
I'm well within my right, but you think you're going to mute me after, you know, you feel that the issue's been covered when you don't answer one single question, forget about it. And you know, you know me well enough. I'm not going to-
Okay, thanks for your, thanks for your comments. And, you know, just one thing to, what the board, the selectmen, Selectwoman Higgins, were discussing under the previous agenda item was a presentation. I certainly think what has been, uh, uh, clearly evident that this board allows the public to speak at our meeting. They have never been denied the right to speak. What was before us was a discussion on how to make a request to do a presentation. Thanks. All right, Mr. Nichols, you would like to speak?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I, I understand there's pathways to the Tabor property. My issue only is basically with lacrosse and other sports in this town. It's a growing town. We all know that. There's, there's building, there's building going on everywhere. The lacrosse is basically over at Young's Pond at this point in a dog park. And I feel, now I'm bringing it to the board without having to go through the citizen's petition and all this nonsense, that we should look to at least put maybe six fields in over there. Girls, boys, and have somewhere for these kids to practice and play. We don't have enough fields in this town for that sport, and it's the fastest growing sport. And we're coming out of a pandemic where we're going to have more kids and we should entice them to play sports. And we really need those fields. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. And, and I will agree. I mean, I've, I've heard from others, the, the need for, uh, fields or all-purpose field, in particular due to the growing, uh, uh, the, in numbers playing lacrosse. Uh, I know this is something that was, that looked at, I believe, actually, um, at the middle school, although the Board of Ed had initially not included in the Ed spec part of the project. My understanding, it is on the agenda for discussion tonight, um, to look at the feasibility of, since there is an existing footprint at the middle school, and, uh, um, and I'm supportive of looking at that, eh, in depth, um, as well as, uh, I'm agnostic to location. If that doesn't work, uh, other locations as well. So, uh, I, you know, understand your, your point, Mr. Nichols, and have heard and had discussions with others on that same topic. All right, any other reasons? Hearing none. Any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, second by Selectwoman Dunbar. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.